Seven o'clock on the dot, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Follow me to order, clerk, call roll, please.
Should we do the pledge of allegiance first?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No, clerk, you can call roll.
Peta?
Here.
Crouch?
Here.
McMullen?
Here.
Scarborough?
Here.
Merrill and Spurrie?
Here. No changes to the agenda? And we'll move to public comment. Anyone like to address the council? Please step forward to the podium, state your name, and remember that we have a three-minute rule.
How's the time?
Yes, anything you'd like to talk about, unless it's on the agenda.
No, no.
Even on the agenda?
My name's Sammy Eflin, and I run the nine or eight point street. And I saw in the paper that we were going to be discussing not parking on the street between James Street and 12th Street on Point Street. And so I just wanted to put my two cents in on that subject. The house next to us, there's like four or five cars parked in front of their house. And their house is so close to the road that the cars are partially in the street. We can't see the back out of our driveway. I know that the neighbor across the street, two cars cannot pass at the same time that they're going opposite directions. So they are driving through the neighbor's yards. And so I was just putting in that I would really appreciate it if you could get that put through to stop the on-street parking on Point.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I have pictures also, if you're interested. I did email pictures.
Please stand to the clerk.
Okay.
If it's on the docket, do you want us to wait, or do you want us to do now?
Now.
Okay.
And state your name, please.
I'm Jerry Stiles. I'm here in regards to, I forget what number it was. You guys can't, giving up the alley between First Street and which is our, either of the streets. I represent LEC Welding. That's the manufacturer that's on First Street there. We use that as an alley to pull out track trailers that we build there. We employ, I believe it's seven people from Streeter. Right now, we are looking to expand. That business is, uh, it's been going for three and a half years now at doing this business there. It's gotten bigger every year. We hope to keep increasing that business. It is a good business. The City of Streeter makes some money off that business because of the sales taxes. If you do take that away from us, we will not be able to pull out our 39-foot trailers that we pull out of that building at all. I mean, it's not going to be able to be possible. You've got to have that room to make that turn. And if you don't, if you make that not an alley no more, we're not going to be able to get on. And if that's the case, then we're not going to be able to build trailers there. So we would have to look at going somewhere else to build trailers and whether it's another town or whatever. I mean, not saying that that's what would happen, I'm just saying that's, if that was possible, that you could not take that away from us and let us use that as a roadway to go back and forth on, like it has been forever. I know not much of the alley is used past us. And some of it actually got taken over by something else, and it's all wooden and stuff. But we do actually use that property to pull out our trailers and onto the road, I mean, onto our property and stuff like that. That's all I really wanted to say at this point. I mean, if you've got any questions when it does come up, I will.
All right. Thank you.
You can call me back up and ask me anything you need. I just wanted to let you know, Louise, the owner of the company, would love to be here, but he, since he started this business, has not been on vacation. And he planned his vacation to Florida, oh, about six months ago. And this just happened last month, and so he went down to Florida. I told him I would come here and represent the company. But he is well aware of what's going on, and I've got to call him as soon as we get out of here to know what the heck happened. I talked to him right before I came in here. But I just want to let you know that that's the reason why he's not here, is because he is in Florida right now, and he could not make it. So sorry about that. Thank you.
Anyone else to address the council?
Good evening. My name is Richard Stell. And I am adjacent to that property business in Spocky Alley. I'm not right next to where their door is, where they pull the trailers out. I am to the west of that. And with this alley, I would like to be able to put privacy events because of looking at it day in and day out and listening to the grinding and the pounding and welding and such, I'd like to have some kind of keep the noise down. And if I were to sell my property, to have that in the back, look at it, I just want to cover that up with a privacy fence.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Hearing done, and we will move to the business. I entertain a motion to open a public hearing regarding an annexation agreement to annex a tract of property on North Shavonah Street and South by 1725th Road. Is there a motion, please?
Second.
Brian Scholl. Dave, do you want to cover this, or is your?
Peta?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill and Spurrie?
Aye.
Now discussion.
I can give some background information. Del Eflin, a local contractor, has purchased a Miller's Trucking property located at the 1725, 1725th Road, uh, on North Shavonah. Is that the right turn number? In any case, he intends to use it for commercial purposes and to play industrial purposes for his business. And he is seeking annexation. The city engineer and I met with him a few weeks ago, where we discussed the terms. And there was a misunderstanding in our meeting, and we're now recommending a five-year city-only tax abatement. So only the city portion of the property tax bill would be abated for five years. In addition, there's a need to extend a storm pipe under Shavonah. And Jeremy is looking at how we best are able to accomplish that, whether it be constructed using our public works department or contracting out. That project has an approximate value of around $15,000.
Lightly less.
Lightly less. So, uh, so that's, uh, that's the project. There is a potential in talking to Mr. Eflin that he would, in the future, subdivide it to allow for him a doubt in additional business to be occupying this property. So this annexation would allow the city to continue growing north. I know one of our goals as a community is to be closer, closer to, uh, over, over the years to Art Park and Marilla Park, and this will help accomplish that. So it's a minimal city investment, other than the, the, uh, other than the cost of the storm pipe, and just have to wait five years to start receiving property taxes.
Okay, this property's never been in, in the city before, right? Even though some think it has been, but.
It has not, no, it's never been annexed.
So this will leave two, um, potential pieces of property. The one to the east and north of, um...
Well, the property has a building and, and quite a bit of yard outside, uh, store, outdoor storage. And so it could very well be that you won't need all of the outdoor space until later coming for a subdivision. But right now, the entire parcel that was formerly used by Miller's Trucking would be part of this project.
I know that I talked to about three years ago to the wood treatment ownership. And they had some ownership even at that point to find a crossing road. But their preference, I think, is stay where they're at, but maybe expand the operation. But I had not had contact for seven years. Any other comments or questions?
Motion to close the book here?
Second.
Okay, I entertain a motion to close the book here until moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Matt.
Peta?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill and Spurrie?
Aye.
Okay, then we'll move to item two. An entertaining motion to approve and authorize the execution of an annexation agreement between the City of Streeter and Delbert Del Eflin. The motion put.
Come on.
Tara, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ryan. Any other discussion or comment? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Peta?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill and Spurrie?
Aye.
Item three, I entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance annexing 2000 North Shavonah Street, owner Delbert Del Eflin in the counties of LaSalle and Livingston, Illinois. PIN number 33-24-132-000.
So vote here.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any seconds? Any other comments or discussion?
Peta?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill and Spurrie?
Aye.
Okay, now we'll move to item four. An entertaining motion to authorize the vacation of a public city right-of-way for an east-west alley between the Zora Street and First Street. 803-819-ZORASTREET, LaSalle, Livingston County. I have a motion, please.
So move.
Matt makes the motion, is your second.
Second.
Here makes, second. Now, any questions or discussion?
Well, I'll start. This matters before you because the city did receive a petition from the property owner. And, uh, oh, I read. On Zora Street, Richard Stell, uh, for the reasons that he stated tonight. The city also received opposition letters from two other property owners, heard from one tonight. Staff is not recommending vacation of the right-of-way tonight. I personally believe that, uh, there would be additional work required prior to any decision to vacate the land because once that decision is made, there's no going back without having to re-acquire it and purchase the right-of-way back. And so I, I think council has to be very careful when you vacate a land. Typically, when you vacate a right-of-way, half of it goes to one property owner, the other half goes to the other. I went out there, and it's difficult to know exactly where the property lines lie without a survey. The gentleman who's here, the resident, uh, he has a gate that, uh, then has gravel to the south. And in looking at the GIS map that is prepared by the South County, it appears as if even some of that gravel area that leads up to its gate is on the neighboring property to the south. And it, but it's difficult to know without a survey who owns what. And, uh, but if you look at the, at how that entire neighborhood has been flooded, even a couple of blocks to the north, you'll see similar rights, uh, alley rights of way that have never been constructed as alleys.
Does that sound recommendation tonight is?
Is not taken.
Do nothing but explore it further?
Right.
Just leave it alone?
I would think tonight, but I do think that it does merit future consideration. I think the property owners all have to weigh in. Uh, there's also a 10-foot alley right-of-way that has never been developed as an alley that is perpendicular and extends north from this alley that is vacated, would be vacated. And even in that case, uh, there's been approaches on a 10-foot strip by a shed, I believe. And there may be other approaches on private driveways and so forth. And that's probably the same case with the other blocks to the north. So I, I would think that before we would do anything, we should take a comprehensive look and then treat all the neighborhoods the same and make sure that we, we get consensus from, uh, the property owners because I doubt anyone wants to harm a business interest that's paying taxes. But at the same time, I, I, you know, I, I think the petitioner has a valid point, you know, in terms of wanting to screen off the, uh, commercial use from residential.
Any council members have any questions?
There's no need to go to zoning.
No, it's basically, Dave said, there's two options. You can table tonight and you can do more research and come back at a staff level. Or if you deny, you keep the status quo. I mean, those are the two things.
I would definitely prefer to table it and look at it hard.
Unless you're going to take action in the near future, I, I wouldn't table it. I would just deny it tonight. But that doesn't bar the city in, in, at some point, you know, the next year or so, to take another look at it. And I would feel much more comfortable if we knew where the property lines were because it could very well be that the truck turnaround area that was open doesn't even involve this alley. Uh, because when I look at the aerial photograph that, uh, that's used, uh, by LaSalle County, that the gravel area that appears to be used for trucking doesn't extend into, uh, the alley right-of-way. But I don't know that for, for certain.
That, I, I didn't visit the site, and there are pins out there, so we can't establish, maybe for clarification at the later date. But there are, there are pins out there that I found.
So I think it's premature to take action tonight.
Well, no, I, I think you're saying it's.
To approve it.
It's premature to approve. The recommendation is still a no vote tonight.
Is this okay with the neighbors that we do nothing with that property that's been there like this for quite some time? And give us time then to be sure that surveyed property owners may be interested in follow-up that way?
That'd be fine. I've had it surveyed.
Is that okay?
Do have pins, but you can do that on your own, you know, if you feel that necessary, yeah.
Okay, so now what should the motion be?
So we have a motion to approve the ordinance. That's the motion that is before city council. So the recommendation from staff is a no vote on the ordinance.
Okay.
Can I say something real quick?
Yeah.
Um, I would really be happy if you guys didn't, if you did that tonight, that you didn't vote on this. That way Louise can come here the next time. If you had any questions or anything, he can talk to you about it as well in greater detail and everything. Like I said, I'm sorry he's not here tonight, but, um, that would really probably make him happy and me happy too because that, that way you didn't take anything away from him while he was gone. I'd be happy as all get out.
But a no vote is preserving the status quo, so that should make him happy.
That's all that matters to me.
Okay, Brad, you got everything down the way you need it now.
What don't you have?
No, it's.
There's a motion to approve the ordinance. The recommendation from staff is a no vote on the ordinance. The motion was made by, um, by, involved in a second by Tara.
I've got that.
Is that okay with the council members? Okay. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Peta?
Are you confused?
Yes.
A no vote will, a no vote.
Did we just say no vote?
A no vote will deny the, the vacating of the alley and the staff's recommendation that you vote no on this matter.
So then, no.
So are you saying no? An O, no, or K-N-O-W, I don't know. The recommendation is a no vote from staff.
I guess we're saying, I'm looking at it, when you say no vote, I'm like, we're just not going to vote on it.
No.
A nay vote.
That's where I said.
We're voting on the ordinance, and the recommendation is to vote down the ordinance.
So then I will nay. Thank you.
Crouch?
Nay.
McMullen?
Nay.
Nay.
Nay. Explore property in question, and that's going to be, and then, uh, be your whatever, but it'll give everybody who had a concern an opportunity, you know, to do something maybe with this property. I mean, it's.
And, and since we would be splitting the right-of-way most likely, then all the property owners would have to agree to take, uh, that now, otherwise we could create a genative situation.
Yeah, that's exactly.
Okay.
Will the city notify everybody or no?
Yeah, we can send a letter out to let them know.
Letter out to everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Item 11, an entertaining motion to authorize the appropriation.
Well, well, Mayor, you skipped ahead. We're on item number five.
Huh?
Five.
There's no basketball game tonight. The Bucks won last night, so we'll not rush a meeting along here. Remember item number five, Mr. Mayor.
Nope. Item five. Entertained a motion to receive and place on file the plan commission's recommendations from the June 8th, 2021 meeting. Number one, plan commission recommendation approving granting of facade grant to owner James and Teresa Humvee, corner of 501 East Main Street and 103 South Sterling Street in the amount of $30,000. And their plan commission's recommendation, recommend the approval and granting facade grant to owner Maria Santoy, 110 East and 112 East Main Street in the amount of $30,000. I have a motion, please.
To move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Matt makes a second. Any discussion? And then clerk, call a roll, please.
Peta?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill and Spurrie?
Aye.
Item six, an entertaining motion to approve and award two facade grants to property owners. James and Teresa Humvee, corner of 501 East Main Street and 103 South Sterling Street. $30,000. Is this the same one?
This is the prior motion, the mayor just put the recommendation on file.
Right, put on file, and this is to grant the money.
That's correct.
Okay. I have a motion, please. So move. Okay, Brian makes motion, is your second?
Second.
Joe's second. Any discussion, just comments?
Well, I, I think I'll start off and I'll let Jeremy correct me when I'm wrong. The two applications tonight are being recommended by the plan commission. Unfortunately, our TIF, the current balance of our TIF fund would only support the funding for one of the two. Since we don't have $60,000 available, we only have $30,000 available to spend. Notwithstanding that financial reality, there is a potential that some COVID monies that may come our way. We expect to receive prior to the end of our fiscal year, something in the magnitude of $800,000 plus may be eligible to be used for economic development and tourism purposes. We haven't received any direct guidance from the state because the state hasn't yet collected the money from the federal government. I, it's one of, Illinois is one of 11 states that hasn't made that request yet. So when we get the money and what restrictions are imposed, it's still a bit up to me here. But I am optimistic that, uh, this could be funded using, uh, some of our COVID money. I, I, I do think there are some restrictions, uh, we could use it for tourism and utility purposes. So, uh,
Okay.
So I would recommend that we approve the, approve the grant to keep our rehab program going downtown.
If we don't get the money from the feds through the state, do we have money to cover both projects?
We would likely need, uh, to transfer some monies just on the actual basis. They cover that, and then next year do fewer projects.
Okay. So we're standing yes for the finance whole project?
Yeah, we're in a similar situation with the Wilkinson Grant for his outdoors, uh, pavilion where it wasn't part of the facade grant, and yet we decided to support it in large part because I think we're bringing some economic development money coming in from the state. But we haven't yet seen that money. I don't have a timeline for it. Last year, we received over $500,000, and over the next two years, I'm expecting to receive about $1.6 million.
Okay.
But until you actually get the, the, the actual limitations, then it's impossible for me to tell you tonight that it would be a limited use. But I'm optimistic that it would be.
Okay. Any other questions?
Are there any, I know in the past we've had projects that would be done this calendar year, and we've been able to push around.
We, we have, we have the potential for one. You guys awarded a product, a two facade grant, $30,000 to, uh, Smith and Tab, the old Cali's East Building. Uh, they have not started work. We have no schedule for when they will start work, and that expires this year. So if they do not use that money, there is $30,000 risk.
Does, yeah, it's for sale. I know it was listed, so I'm not sure if they're, I don't know if that's still in.
The, the, by the program terms, they have to have expended the money and request reimbursement by the end of this fiscal year. Otherwise, they would have to reapply.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Peta?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill and Spurrie?
Aye.
Okay. Are we on six or seven?
Seven.
Seven, right. Entertain a motion to approve and award two facade grants to the property owner Maria Santoy, one oh one, one oh two East Main Street, Streeter, Illinois in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. So. That makes a move. Motion is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion?
On this one, was there something in our grant, I'm trying to find it, um, about siding? Cause there's something about replacing siding over doors. I can't remember if we had a, um, a rule out there about not doing that.
There, there was a rule that basically that, uh, if there was an old, it's not a rule, but it was a guide, they're all guidelines in there, so you, you do whatever you want. But there was a guideline that uh, windows and doors would be reopened if they were to be sited over. So in this case, they're proposing installing some new siding around the door. The doorway exists there today and they want to just kind of freshen up the look around that door uh, using some wood siding, I believe.
Any other comments, questions? Clerk Cole Roll, please.
You know, uh, Mr. Mayor,
Huh?
before we vote on this, I'm gonna recommend, and I'm sorry, I didn't catch this sooner, I'm gonna recommend that Mr. Crouch have stayed on this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead and wear it.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page.
Beadie?
Aye.
Crouch?
Epstein.
McMillan?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Marilyn.
Aye. Item eight, entertain a motion to approve an I dot highway permit for the temporary closure of a portion of the westbound Illinois Route eighteen, Main Street and the north lane of Bridge Street and reduction of two lanes of northbound Illinois Route twenty-three for on Park Street, one lane through, through traffic in the City of Streeter for cruise night on September the fifth, two thousand twenty-one.
No move.
For a second.
Second.
Okay. This is something we have to retain in our state of the year with I dot. Is there any other questions or comments? Clerk Cole Roll, please.
Beadie?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
McMillan?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Marilyn.
Aye. Item nine, entertain a motion to authorize the purchase of real property, three oh four South Park Street and the City of Streeter counties of LaSalle and Livingston, Illinois. Have a motion, please.
No move, Charlie.
For a second. Any other discussion or comments?
This is a matter we've discussed at Cala number times.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's been discussed at the Cal meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Clerk Cole Roll, please.
Beadie?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
McMillan?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Marilyn.
Aye. Item ten, entertain a motion to award a construction contract to Toby's Construction and Cardage, Herschel, Illinois for the twenty twenty-one MFT roadway project, which includes the overlay and installation of curb and gutter along North Vermillion Street from Kent Street to Morel Street.
No move.
Second.
Is there any other discussion or comments, Jeremy, do you'd like to make?
Say, uh, yeah, this is basically, this is the last part of your twenty twenty-one uh, roadway program. Uh, so it's the MFT portion, uh, funded through MFT. Uh, we had four bids for the project uh, last week. Uh, Toby's Construction being the lowest bid at just over two hundred and seven thousand. Uh, so items ten and eleven are actually in conjunction. Uh, every year when we lay out the MFT program, we have to pass a resolution in December, end of the year. Uh, that resolution that you passed was for two hundred thousand. So item eleven will be an additional ten thousand to make it two hundred and ten thousand towards the project. Uh, Toby's bid was two hundred and seven and some change. Uh, so recommending approval, but it was slightly over the two hundred thousand dollar estimate that I had put together in December.
Any other comments or discussion? Clerk Cole Roll, please.
Beadie?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
McMillan?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Marilyn.
Aye. Item eleven, entertain a motion to authorize the appropriation of ten thousand dollars in MFT funds in connection with the City of Streeter twenty twenty-one North Vermillion Street construction project.
To move.
For a second.
Second.
Is there any other questions from what Jeremy asked? Clerk Cole Roll, please.
Beadie?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
McMillan?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Marilyn.
Aye. Item twelve, uh, city clerk will administer the oath to the council members for the liquor advisory committee, something we have to do according to the liquor commission laws. So, what do you want us to do, thank you.
So, again, would you, try?
Everybody?
I'm not reaching, I'm not pushing. So just repeat after me all together. I, city council person.
Hey, Joshua.
Senator. City council.
Having been elected to the office of the council in the city of Streeter,
Have you been elected to the office of council in the city of Streeter?
From the counties of LaSalle and Livingston,
Counties of LaSalle and Livingston.
I will serve as, on the liquor advisory committee for the city of Streeter.
I will serve on the advisory, advisory, the city of Streeter.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the constitution of the United States
I do solemnly swear I support the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the codes and ordinances of the city of Streeter according to the best of my ability.
The codes and ordinances of the city of Streeter to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Now I think this is something that has to be done annually, right?
It's a kind of a unique feature of our liquor control ordinance.
Yeah. Item thirteen, entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance amending section four point one two zero two zero C of the Streeter Municipal Code of Ordinances according to the number of liquor licenses for video gaming businesses. And this is what we had discussed, Cheryl drafted for us and it's been discussed on the council and it's just the.
It, it clarifies what was done in October seventeen.
Okay.
Um, but it states it more clearly and it's for the new direction, council.
Okay. Can I have a motion, please?
To move.
For a second.
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk Cole Roll, please.
Beadie?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
McMillan?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Marilyn.
Aye. Item fourteen, entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance amending section ten point two four point one two zero of the Streeter Municipal Code concerning no parking for the city of Streeter. Have a motion, please.
No move.
Second.
For a second. Any other discussion or comments?
This is the matter that was discussed at last week's Cal meeting and the city council took public comments on at that meeting.
Jeremy, do you have any?
Just as for summary, this will establish no parking zones along River Avenue between LaSalle and Court. Uh, no parking along uh, Hoyne Street from twelfth to James and also no parking on uh, Coal Street on the east side of the road, south from Charles to the first driveway.
Any other comments or questions?
So basically what it does is it gives the police authority, if you want to explain to them to, if there is people parking there.
The, the, the. Yes, the police will be able to write tickets after the period, I think we have to, Cheryl knows to post it for a certain month time, so.
It, it, it needs to be posted for ten days and signs need to be posted as well, advising no parking.
And then I know one of the gentleman in the back wanted the whole street closed, but we can always address it down the road if things don't.
That's council's discretion, yes.
Any other comments or questions? Clerk Cole Roll, please.
Beadie?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
McMillan?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Marilyn.
Aye. Item fifteen, entertain a motion to authorize to commit local funds to support the proposed South Vermillion Street sewer project, community development block grant, public infrastructure grant. As, this is the one that's going from Lundy to Twelfth Street?
Coron Creek to Twelfth Street.
Coron, the, the Coron Creek.
From the creek, we have a piece of pipe out of the creek and then we'll take off from there.
Okay. Have a motion, please.
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have seconds. Any other discussion or comments? Clerk Cole Roll, please.
Beadie?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
McMillan?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Marilyn.
Aye. Item sixteen, entertain a motion to approve the W W T P electrical coordination study for the sewer plant.
No move.
Second.
Any other comments or discussion? Anything you want to highlight, Jeremy?
This is basically, uh, about a month ago, we had an issue with the sewer plant. Uh, a lot of electrical components, pumps, motors and things at the sewer plant. Uh, one of our pumps failed, which they do, that's something, it's a mechanical device that failed. Uh, but it did not trip its breaker, it tripped a, another breaker further down the line, basically the, one of the main, main branch feeders that feeds the plant. All those industrial breakers have settings, various settings that they turn the dials up and down for instantaneous trip. Uh, but all that system needs to be looked at, cause when, when it did happen, we had a period of a, a couple of hours where one third of the plant had no power. Corrected it, it was on Sunday, the plant operator did a really good job, got it back up and running. Uh, was notified right away, but needs to be figured out why. So just, basically an electrician, in this case it would be Feecy Electric, uh, who knows our plant well, will go down there and look at every component, electrical component on that branch and make sure they're all set correctly, so we don't have that issue again.
So this is for the electrical exam of?
Of a third of the sewer plant. It's one, it's, it's one third of the sewer plant.
Any other comments or questions? Clerk Cole Roll, please.
Beadie?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
McMillan?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Marilyn.
Aye. Uh, item seventeen, I'm recommending uh, the following members, three appointments to the library board of trustees. Uh, reappointing is Jane Ferrell and these are three-year terms. Uh, new member is Gail Russell. Can I have a motion, please?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments or discussion? Clerk Cole Roll, please.
Beadie?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
McMillan?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Marilyn.
Aye. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with a fund warrant total of seven hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars and twenty-two cents.
No move.
Second.
Second. Any other comments or discussion? Clerk Cole Roll, please.
Beadie?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
McMillan?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Marilyn.
Aye. Item nineteen is for any other comments from city officials.
I have one. This has been going on for a long time, I talked to council, ex-councilman, Rose, ex-fun, but at the library, to the parking lot to the north, there are two sections of uh, plant shrubbery, there's one that's the city of Streeter saying, I don't know how long you've been telling, but the library says the city owns it, the city says it's library property. Um, if someone were to come forth and volunteer to take care of maintaining it, uh, who would have the authority in the city?
That would be the council's authorization for it to happen.
So basically what Bummy does is go in there and when the weeds get, he just knocks down, but I've had people approach me, would want a plant.
The, the parking lot itself belongs to the library. And the library has its own budget, its own officers, its own president. Now, as a mayor, I have the responsibility of appointing the members with council's approval. But they are beyond that point, self-autonomous operation and they handle everything themselves. That's by statute. And uh, the, uh, in September to the first and the second weekend of September, I haven't heard yet, but they're getting ready to rededicate the Soderstrom room in the library. Now, the Soderstrom Family Trust has donated all of the money for that project. And uh, so we're finally after, it's sitting empty, I think, and not being used nearly forty years, we'll be able to put it back into use like for classrooms and as uh, computers. I mean, it, it's gonna be, there's gonna be a room, I think, for uh, special studies that has some of his papers and stuff like this in it. So that will be forthcoming in September. But I'm sure that the library, the library is, is currently handling the uh, the listing of invitees. I don't think it would be of the magnitude of the statue that was down in the park, but it's not gonna be any small thing either. Now the statue that we have in the park, there is a similar statue that's here in Streeter, Illinois. One on the campus of the University of Illinois and one on the campus of the Capitol in Springfield. And these were all donated by the family in memory of their grandfather movements. He uh, basically, he had a third grade education. Got his education, he said his college was Streeter Public Library. So from the third grade on, he basically self-educated himself and did uh, tremendous amount of stuff for the uh, the labor movement. And so this is uh.
I guess my question, Cheryl. I guess my question, Cheryl, if we do anything, river rack, make it look better? Is it ours then, or is it...
I think we need to finally establish who's responsible. Uh, the library does have a contractor that does its own landscaping, but for whatever reason, the library director has decided not to include the parking lot areas that you're talking about, even though that parking lot serves their facilities. I have asked Larry Gicky or Public Works Director to maintain it until we get a final resolution. If there's a community group that wants to plant flowers and that, that, that's all well and good. But at the end of the day, we need to make sure that it's being properly maintained, whether it be done by the library or by the public works. And we have this big event coming up, and so...
Again, I mean, it seems like if we do something, then they're going to say, it's yours. You did it.
Well, that's, that's, I, I think there are a couple of issues that the mayor and I need to address with the, uh...
In the past, they said, it's absolutely true. And, uh, I have the authority to appoint one council member to the library board. And I haven't talked to Matt about it yet. But, uh, Mr. Brozak, when he turns us up, he would like to come off of that. And then we would then be appointing, uh, another council member to represent council. And that, that's, uh, I want to ask you to do that. But it may be within, I don't know, maybe a year. Is that your...
Take it.
Anybody have any, Sarah?
I forgot about, there's, uh, a memorial plaque going up August tenth at Humbakers, um, it's going to be by the head of his law. There's a group getting together to honor him and that's going to be at eleven thirty. So, it'll be right, right there with, um, something I think is more ceremony or unveiling for it on that date.
Matt? Joe? Then, entertain that we, a motion to going to close session for the purpose of discussing legal matters under five ILCS purchase or lease of property. Have a motion, please.
To move.
Joe, is there a second?
Second.
And, any other discussion, comrade? Clerk call roll, please.
Vida?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
McMullin?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Maryland.
Aye. Okay, then we, we're going to close.